Good evening. We will call our meeting to order. First, we have roll call. To that, we turn to our new secretary, Louise Jackson.
Thank you, Leila. All board members are present.
Great. Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us for our Carmel Clay School Board Special Session, which, as our candidates know, our finalists know, that we are going to be interviewing for the position of the school board member for District Two. On Friday, August 27th of 2021, Carmel Clay Schools announced the retirement of District Two School Board Member Pam Knals with an effective date of September 13th, 2021. Following the announcement, Carmel Clay School Board of Trustees began the process to appoint a new board member to fill the remainder of the term for the District Two vacancy, which is until December 31st, 2022. As required by Indiana statute, the board must fill this position within 30 days of the effective date of vacancy. Carmel Clay Schools posted the application for the District Two School Board vacancy to the district website on August 27th, and District Two residents who were interested in serving were invited to submit an application no later than midnight, September 12th, 2021. On Monday, September 20th, the school board members met in executive session to review the applications and selected four applicants to move forward in the public interview portion of the application process. Today, Monday, October 4th, we are holding a special session to interview these final four candidates. The school board anticipates meeting tomorrow evening, Tuesday, October 5th, in a special session, which will be a live session, to appoint the new District Two board member. And to finish the appointment process, Carmel Clay School Board plans to swear in the new school board member on Tuesday, October 12th, at the school board work session. The board wants to thank the Carmel community for their engagement and willingness to serve the students, staff, and families of Carmel. Several individuals submitted applications, and we were very impressed with all of the very qualified candidates that applied. Selecting the final four candidates for this public interview process was a very difficult decision with so many highly qualified and impressive candidates. Tonight, I'd like to introduce, in alphabetical order by first name, the four finalists, and thank them in advance for being here and being willing to serve. We have with us Jennifer Williams, Jonathan Shapiro, Nikki McNally, and Vinkat Tadakonda. This evening, during this process, each candidate will be interviewed independently. Each candidate will be given the same questions given by the board members, and your session will last approximately 20 minutes. You will be at the podium, and we will have some water up there in case your mouth should get dry. Before we get started, I'd like to ask if there are any questions from the board or any of the candidates at this time. Well, we are excited and thankful that you are here to join us, and so we're going to get started. I believe the three candidates, Jonathan, Nikki, and Vinkat, will go with Dr. Beresford. And Jennifer, you get to join us at the podium.
Please just let me know if you have any difficulty hearing me.
Okay, that sounds great, and we will. We can hear you just fine, so if we can hear you, they should be able to hear you online as well.
All right.
Thank you. So I'm going to start with a little warm-up question, which is kind of nice. Tell us a little bit about yourself and how your experience will benefit Carmel Clay Schools.
Thank you. So I'm Jennifer Nelson-Williams. I've lived here in Carmel for the last 18 years, grew up in Indianapolis. And in addition to being a business owner, I own a funeral home here in Carmel. I have two children that went through Carmel Schools. And during that time, while they were here, I worked in the classroom. I tutored English. After they were finished, I was part of United Ways Read Up Indiana Program. And in addition to those years of helping here in the classroom, I'm now doing it again with Josh's son, who is nine today. So we're back to third grade reading and math. So I've spent years working in the classroom, outside the classroom, helping my kids. And in addition to my business successes, I'm familiar with budgets, management, and profit and loss. So I feel like I'm uniquely qualified to be part of the board.
Thank you. Thank you. My question is, what motivates you to want to become a board member? Can you tell us your why?
Sure. So the first is, I'm just passionate about the kids and the schools. I feel that the schools are really the crown jewel of this community. And it's why so many of us, I know, growing up, Carmel was just a very small community. I went to North Central High School. I grew up in Indianapolis. But as my kids were born, and I started looking at where I wanted them to be educated, I looked to Carmel because there were so many wonderful things going on here. And for the community to survive and to thrive, we really need to put our kids first. And it's so important to me to be a part of that process. It's really raining out there. It's so important because they're our future. They need our help. We need to put our brightest talents here on the school board. And again, I'm so impassioned by it. And not only that, so, you know, there are many people, as we saw, there were many people who are applicants. This is a unique time for me that I'm able to do it. So my daughter, Lindsay, just graduated from college in July. And so, you know, there's many people who are passionate about being here and being part of the process. But I have a flexibility now that many parents don't enjoy, and so I felt like it was my time to give back.
Thank you. Can you maybe tell us about a time when you had to work with a team or team members to make a tough decision? And maybe speak to your process for making the difficult decision?
Yeah, well, I started a not-for-profit in 2016, something that I had never done before. It was at a difficult time for women in this community. And a friend and I co-founded an organization that brought together many different types of women. It's a women's organization, Women for Change. And very quickly, we grew to almost 15,000 members. And bringing all those differences of opinions and different backgrounds rose unique challenges. One of the guiding principles of our organization is civility and decorum. And so we had to learn how to still be impassioned, but listen to others' opinions, listen to others' viewpoints, respect one another's backgrounds, and then come to guiding, a guiding platform. And, you know, develop it, we would say, you know, build the plane as we were flying it. And so I think that that is very similar to the situation that we find ourselves here today with Carmel and where we are. There's fear, there's differences of opinion. But I think the thing that brings us all together, one, is the love and respect for the city, the love and respect for our children, and the desire to create something wonderful for our kids. And so, you know, I really believe that we can, while being respectful with one another, come to some consensus.
Well, thank you, Jennifer, again, for being here. The next question we have for you is, what attributes do you believe are essential to be a successful school board member?
I certainly can't speak to them all because I've never done this before. I certainly will try my best. But what I believe, they're similar to the things I bring to my work and to Women for Change and to the other organizations that I am a part of. It's certainly my desire to do the work. I'm not a shirker. I dig in. I will do the research. Also, my love of people. And I think the success in my career is because I can connect with people. And it's something that is, you know, part of the 8,000 people or so that I've met with over the 30 years of my career. I also am from a long line of people who feel it's important to serve our communities. My brother is a city counselor here in Carmel. My boyfriend works for the city. I mean, those passions that we bring to these jobs, I think will make me good at this position. And just my love of the kids. I mean, I love kids. As we were driving here, Josh said, you know, just because you're going on to school board doesn't mean that, you know, you get to hang out with the kids. But I think that I have a desire to, and I think the thing that brings me here are the right reasons, that I just want to make Carmel and Carmel Clay Schools the best that they can be.
Thank you. So our next question is, can you give us one to two examples when you've had to work with others who may have had different priorities, different backgrounds, different values, or even opinions than yours? And share what strategies you use to get to an outcome?
Sure. I mean, I think I have those, without going into a specific situation, I mean, I think those things arise at work, where maybe I'm trying to help a family come to, I see families all the time, and as families grow and they get larger and people marry, you have many differences of opinions on what type of arrangement is best for their family. And so I try and listen, hear the differences of opinion, and try and help families come and reach some consensus. Similarly, with our work for Women for Change, as I said, as we try and work towards policies that can benefit women in the community, Hoosier women, we bring to the table all sorts of people from different backgrounds, different opinions, different viewpoints. And we try and work together for the better good. And I think listening and respect for another's viewpoint, trying to, as they say, walk through, walk through in someone else's shoes, trying to see where they came from, what brought them to this time and this place. Empathy is really the best way of helping navigate those differences of opinion.
Thank you. Can you tell us about what you know and like about CCS and what you could improve?
You know, I've just been very impressed with our years at Carmel. My kids started at Collegewood when we first moved to Carmel, and then they were redistricted to West Clay, and then on to Carmel High School. I was impressed by the teachers and the support staff. I was, I found their curriculum to be interesting and fulfilling for my children. Both of my kids were in the challenge program, which they made so many wonderful friends. And, you know, I really felt like it taught to their ability. You know, the redistricting process was very difficult. It was scary. And I, we were separated from some children. And as anybody who is a parent knows, in those younger ages, probably even, this just happened to us when my kids were little, but you feel like they'll never make another friend. So it was difficult and scary. I think that probably could always be more transparent. I don't know the future of the needs for redistricting, but certainly I know that's always a challenge for families. But overall, I have been immensely pleased with, and with my experiences, and now watching Holden. And he struggles with reading and has some issues, but his teachers have been overwhelmingly supportive in helping him get the care and the support he needs so that he can become a confident young man. So I'm highly impressed with Carmel.
Thank you. If chosen for the board, how will you keep confidentiality of information a priority?
Well, I mean, I'm very used to that in my work. I mean, we have sensitive information that we are given about an individual, about their cause of death, about their social security information. And so I'm very used to keeping information close to me. It is a top priority so that one can feel that secure, that the integrity of the board is maintained. So I don't have any problem with that.
Kind of moving off of that topic, but on a similar one. School board service requires time. How much time and energy can you dedicate to this position?
As I mentioned before, both of my kids are out of the house. I was very busy as they were growing up. For many of those years, I was head of a single-parent household. So I had two teenagers at one time, driving them around, taking care of them while working full-time. Now that Lindsay's graduated and Ari is a third-year med student here in town, I have the time and the energy to devote to this, and it is my top priority. I've been in my career for 30 years, so I certainly have the support staff I need. I'm blessed that I have a wonderful team underneath me, and this is my priority at this time.
And our last question for the evening. Are you part of any organization that may cause a conflict of interest? And if so, which organization might that be?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Does anybody else on the board have any questions they'd like to follow up on or touch on? Jennifer, thank you very much for joining us this evening.
I just wanted to say, I think you all are doing such an admirable job. I'm honored to be here, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, John.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
We're going to ask, we're going to, I guess, alternate who's asking the questions. We have a series of questions, and like I said before, that we're going to be asking everybody the same questions.
Okay, great.
And so for your very first question, which is a nice, easy warm-up question, tell us a little bit about yourself and how your experience will benefit Carmel Clay Schools.
Sure. Well, first of all, thank you for having me. I'm really grateful to have the opportunity to be here. Grew up on the East Coast, in New York City, married a Hoosier, so I'm a Hoosier by marriage. And we've raised our son, who's a middle-schooler here in Carmel. And I've spent my entire professional career in a variety of youth-serving organizations, both in the formal education arena and also what I would term as the informal education arena as well. And, you know, feel, as a parent, and as an educator, and as a member of the community, I've got a lot to offer to the school district, and I'm excited to pursue the opportunity.
Thank you. So what motivates you to want to become a board member? Can you tell us your why?
Sure. I think simply my why is to pay it forward. I've been very fortunate throughout my life to have people who have laid the groundwork and the foundation for what, for me, has been some really formative experiences. And feel that I'm in a position professionally and experientially to be able to do that for others. And, you know, I've had a number of different volunteer experiences before, so servant leadership is sort of part of who I am. And this is just another way for me to, again, pay it forward to other students and families within Carmel.
Thank you. Tell us about a time when you had to work with a team or team members to make a tough decision. Speak to your process for making the difficult decision, please.
Sure. That's a great question. I think I'm faced, I've been faced with tough decisions in a number of different arenas, both professionally and personally. In the work environment, as an example, I work as part of a small team. And, you know, at the end of the day, my supervisor expects me to be responsible for that decision. However, I'm a firm believer in a collaborative effort and ensuring that everyone's voice is able to be heard and that voice is valued. So often, so, I mean, as a more specific example, budget planning. We're just doing that for 2022 at work. And, you know, it's an interesting environment still in recovery from COVID, especially in the non-for-profit sector. So some tough decisions have to be made as to where expenses can go and where they can't go. And really, part of that process was ensuring that everybody had the opportunity to have their voice heard, opinion shared. And at the end of the day, we have to make the best decision for the group. And I think, you know, it really mirrors an experience that would happen as a member of any board, but certainly the school board as well, what's the best decision for the students and families in Carmel.
Well, thank you, John, again, for being here. You kind of answered the question right there at the end, but I'm going to just throw it out to you again. What attributes do you believe are essential to be a successful school board member?
Thanks, Mike. So I think any board member, really, the board's role is fiduciary oversight. And I think specifically, when it comes to school board, that's around budget. It's also around evaluating, and if necessary, hiring or making an employment decision on the superintendent. You know, I think our role as board members is to support the professional staff who have the background, education, and professional skills to be doing their job day-to-day. Certainly to review policy. And I think specifically, when you're representing a specific area within Carmel, it's to hear, to listen to the folks with whom I'm supposed to be representing and bring that opinion forward where and when it's appropriate to do so.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience. I'm just jotting notes. Our next question is, can you give us one to two examples of when you've had to work with others who may have had different priorities, different backgrounds, different values or opinions than yourself? And share what strategies you've used to get to the outcome?
Sure. I think this happens, I mean, it certainly happens in professional circles. I've had the experience thus far in serving on a couple of different boards from different other organizations, both here in Indianapolis and Carmel and when I lived on the East Coast. And certainly, you know, variety of opinion and background will always play a role. I believe what's really important is to think about primary purpose and mission of the organization that you're entrusted with representing. And that has to be the focal point through which you look. You know, I happen to be the parent of a child in the Carmel Schools. However, my role on a school board is not of my opinion individually. It is collective of, again, the folks that I would be responsible for representing. And so it's sort of taking that 10,000-foot macro view and saying, okay, what are the mission? What are the values? What are the expectations? And are we fulfilling them that way, not necessarily what does John Shapiro think is the right answer?
Can you tell us about what you know and like about Carmel Clay Schools and then what you could improve?
Sure. Certainly, my perspective here is based on experience of, through the eyes of a current middle-school student. I will tell you one of when my family and I decided to move back here. As I mentioned, my wife is a native Hoosier and grew up on the north side of Indianapolis. And we were living on the East Coast, and we had some decisions to make as to where we were going to relocate 10 years ago. When we decided to come to the greater Indianapolis area, we actually specifically chose we actually specifically chose Carmel largely due to the school system and knowing that it was a high-quality education and that the values were in line with the values that my wife and I hold to be very important and that we try and raise our son on. And so we've been really pleased with the quality of education, both in terms of the academic education, but also in terms of character development, meeting students where they are. I think those things are all done really, really well in school. I think, and a continued opportunity for growth in any school system, is how do we continue to make sure we're meeting the needs of all students? You know, Carmel is becoming more and more diverse. And that is not just socioeconomically, but it's also politically. It is values-based. And the public school system needs to be representative of the students that it's serving. And so I think continuing on the path that we're on and ensuring that we're providing equitable opportunity, that students can be socially and emotionally safe so that they can be academically successful is, needs to continue to be a priority.
Thank you. If chosen for the board, how will you keep confidentiality of information a priority?
I mean, quite simply, what happens at a board meeting is not, you know, unless it's executive session, that obviously is, that's a private matter. Or, you know, whatever is disclosed in board minutes or is disclosed publicly at a meeting, obviously, anybody has access to that information. But beyond that, you know, what happens in a boardroom stays in a boardroom. And certainly, as I mentioned before, some of that may be personnel matters and things that are highly confidential. And that really isn't anybody else's business. And it's, it's almost as if that segment of that experience needs to be sort of put away until it's an opportune time to take it back out.
So the next question we have is, school board service requires time. How much time and energy can you dedicate to this position?
I'm willing to dedicate the time and energy that's needed to fulfill the responsibilities of the role. I've had the opportunity to talk with my employer about the fact that I'm pursuing this. They're completely supportive. And so, you know, I, I know, generally speaking, what the meeting schedule is. And those are things that I, you know, stand firmly behind being committed to as well as doing anything I need to do to engage with the constituents in the community. Because again, a priority for me is making sure that they feel as if they have a voice to somebody on the school board.
And last but not least, we're very interested in knowing, are you part of any organization that would have a conflict of interest being on this board?
I do not believe so.
Okay, that's fantastic. Well, do you have any questions for us? And do you, does the board have any other additional questions that you'd like to ask at this time? Do you have anything else you'd like to share? You're allowed to say no. We don't want to put you on the spot, but...
I appreciate the opportunity. I, I, no, I'm, like I said, I'm grateful for the opportunity to be considered. I do think I have a lot to offer. My resume demonstrates, again, my experience both in the formal education circles as well as just youth-serving organizations in general. And I think that could be a real benefit to the board.
Well, thank you very much.
I appreciate your consideration.
Well, we are very excited to have you here. And thank you very much for joining us this evening.
Thank you. It's my pleasure. Thank you, it's my pleasure.
Thank you for having me.
We have a series of questions, and we are asking you the same questions that we've asked the other candidates. And we're going to rotate on who's asking which question.
Okay.
And I'm going to start. And it's an easy warm question, so you can just feel very comfortable. But our first question is, tell us a little about yourself and how your experience will benefit Cromwell Clay Schools.
Okay, so I'm Nikki McNally, and I have four kids in the school district. My husband and I have lived in Carmel since 2003, so we're longtime residents. My oldest son graduated in 2019, and then I have two senior sophomore in the high school, and our youngest is in sixth grade. Having four kids with different interests and different activities, I have pretty much been around every activity you can think of in Carmel Clay Schools, whether it's track, cross-country, swim meets, musicals, CHTV, even spellable, I've pretty much seen everything. So I have a lot of experience volunteering in the classroom, volunteering in the library, bookstores, pretty much everywhere. I also kind of stepped up my volunteer game a couple of years ago in 2019, when I co-chaired the parent political action committee for the school safety referendum. So that involved basically all the campaigning for the referendum. So we met at people's homes, we went to events, we spoke pretty much all over the city to gather bipartisan support for the referendum. So that allowed me to see the administrative side of the district, school funding, the comprehensive safety plans, the things that you didn't see just being in the classroom on a day-to-day basis. I would also say that I learned the ins and outs of the IEP process. My oldest son left with a very extensive IEP, and after years of advocating for his education, I really learned how things work in very great detail in the classroom. So I've been around the block. Thank you.
Can you tell us what motivates you to want to become a board member? Tell us your why.
So I wrote about this in my application, so this will not be new to you, but since this is kind of for the public record, I'll talk about it here. There is a quote that's thrown around in volunteer circles that I work in, and that quote is that there's no such thing as other people's children. And so I might do everything right for my four kids at home. They might have, you know, all the educational academic support they need, the safety that they have, they might feel valued, respected, but our community on the whole is not successful unless all of the students have all of those opportunities. And so I feel like the board is a very impactful way to help other people's children. I really do believe that. I volunteered for nearly a decade to try to make not only schools safer, but our communities safer. I helped to start the Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in Indiana chapter, where we advocate for better common sense gun laws. And so that worked on a community level to try to make kids safer. Obviously, I was very committed to school safety, and it's really about taking care of all of the children of the district. And I think that is what creates a successful community on the whole.
Tell us about a time when you had to work with a team or team members to make a tough decision. Would love for you to speak to your process for making the difficult decision.
So I've got a long history of working on nonpartisan groups where people are on all sides of the political spectrum. Believe it or not, an issue like gun control has really broad support on both sides of the political aisle. And so in that organization where I worked for many years, we had a lot of situations where people were coming from very different viewpoints. And I have found that in working with teams like that, you start with common ground. What do we agree on? And you kind of go from there. And really, over the years of working with bipartisan or nonpartisan teams in these volunteer jobs, I've found that you end up with deeper understanding of the issues and really more creative problem solving, because you're attacking it from different sides. You're seeing different viewpoints than just your own little bubble. And I think it ends up being very valuable. So really being, starting with common ground, meeting people where they are, and then trying to push forward from there.
Well, thank you Nikki again for being here. What attributes do you think are essential to be a successful board member?
For being a board member, I think one of the things that you guys are hearing about a lot right now is transparency and being able to listen to the community. I think that's one of the main jobs of a board member, is to be able to listen, take that, whether it's criticism of the board or the district, but really have an open mind hearing all of those different viewpoints and being able to really listen to the community. I think a dedication to the kids is obviously paramount to this position. Really just being fair and moderate in viewpoint and being able to take what the community is giving and hopefully use that to guide the policy for the school.
Next, we'd like to know, can you give us one to two examples where you've had to work with others who may have different priorities, backgrounds, values, even opinions other than yourself? And what strategy did you share to get to an outcome? And you sort of touched on this, but you might have other examples.
Yeah, there's, so, you know, I do have a day job, which I didn't mention before. I work in insurance and finance, and that part of my day is always very boring. But in these, in the volunteer world, when you're working with volunteers, you don't have the control that you have in the workplace with employees or with, you know, a very regimented job. And so there are so many examples over the years, whether it's volunteering, we had a big volunteer team which was within Carmel with the referendum, the political action committee, that we didn't always agree on the approach forward. But I think really where I learned to moderate the teams and the groups and push people forward is with that very divisive controversial work on gun safety legislation. What I always found with any gun rights supporter, you know, whatever they thought I was saying initially, we always could find common ground. In every conversation, you just remain calm, you find that common ground, and you meet people where they are. And we're all human beings, we all tend to want the same things, which is a better community, a better tomorrow for our kids. And if you can stay calm and find your common ground, I think pretty much everyone could find a way forward.
Can you tell us what you know and like about Cromwell Clay Schools and then what you could improve?
Well, obviously, I like it because we've been here for a really long time. But over the years, I've seen a lot of things change. I am interested if I'm able to move forward in this position to find out a little bit more about curriculum. I had a son in the challenge program as early as 2009, 2010, and I had one that just finished it in fifth grade last year. So a couple of years ago, I was one of those parents questioning the board on what is happening. So it's gone through a lot of changes. I'm interested to learn more just about curriculum in general. I have learned more about what happened with that. But just the curriculum in general, I think I'd like to find out more about and see where that comes from and what we might be able to do to improve things. And then I think that's probably the biggest thing for me. I want to make sure that all the hard work we did on the school safety referendum is followed through. I know we have a couple more SROs to be hired. I want to make sure that those safety plans stay strong, stay current, and they're always being as safe and locked down as we can possibly be. My commitment to school safety is huge. You know, I can't even tell you the countless hours I have dedicated in my life, volunteer hours, to try to improve safety at schools and the community on the whole. And so that's just something, I think we are doing really well, but being able to take a deeper dive and really understand that we're doing everything that we can is a big priority for me. Oh, one more thing I would say, because I know you're hearing a lot about this too, but I do feel like as an outsider, whether I agree with the board's current decisions or not, I feel like the communication from the school on the whole to parents has some improvement, so it can be improved. I think a lot of things the schools do great in letting people know, and I'm sure there's a lot of things you can't let parents know. And I think that parents right now are struggling with not hearing maybe enough.
Okay, if chosen for the board, how will you keep confidentiality of information a priority?
I'm sorry, how would I keep confidentiality a priority?
Yes ma'am.
So I'm married to a lawyer. He has been a lawyer for a long time, and he has trained me to not talk about things, not put things in email. I hear about this all the time. Confidentiality has kind of been ingrained in our household in general, that when somebody tells you something in confidence, it is not to go anywhere. So obviously, that would apply to anything here. I, my day job, I deal with people's confidential information on a daily basis. It's something I'm very used to doing.
Well, obviously, school board requires time. So how much time and energy can you dedicate to this position?
Yeah, so that's probably one of the things that maybe a decade ago kept me from here. This is something that I've always had in the back of my mind, thinking about doing. But I had four little kids, so now those little kids aren't so little anymore. My job, I work for myself. I started my business about 17 years ago, and it's given me a lot of flexibility to both be in my kids' lives, in the school, in the day-to-day, the day-to-day things that a lot of parents aren't able to do, but it would also provide me flexibility with this as well.
And last but not least, are you part of any organization that you're aware of that may cause a conflict of interest with you serving on the board?
No, I'm really not a part of any official organizations anymore. I've done a lot of volunteer work. I've been helping the parents, the parent group, that's supporting the diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives in Carmel Clay Schools. But obviously, as a board member, I wouldn't be able to do those kinds of things directly like that. So I have no problem with stepping back from those things in order to remain neutral and nonpartisan, and that's no problem at all.
Thank you. Does the board, does anybody else have any other questions? And do you have any questions or anything you'd like to share with us?
No, I think that you guys pretty much covered it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much Nikki.
Appreciate it.
Well, Venkata, please join us at the podium.
Somebody forgot their laptop. Okay. I'm ready.
Well, that sounds great. So Venkata, we have a series of questions, and they're the same questions that we've asked each of the candidates. And we're all going to alternate on who's going to be asking the questions. I'm going to get started, and it's a pretty easy warm question to be asking. It is, tell us a little about yourself and how your experience will benefit Cromwell Clay Schools.
Sure. I introduce myself first. My name is Venkara Tariqonda. I've been a resident of Carmel since 2004. I had all of my education in India. I'm blessed to have my education with four different religious schools. It started with the Christian, and then Hindu, and then also Muslim. So I have a combination of different cultures, diverse education skills, and I'm pretty good at interacting with all these different cultures in and out of states too. So I've been actively involved in nationality council, which has about 60 countries' representatives. So no one is less, no one is more. So we are all at the same place and then doing same purpose, sharing the ideas, and then getting along with each other. So in addition to that, I also am part of my own local Indian community, Carmel Education Foundation. And I think I'm blessed to have expedition program, which has opened many doors for me to stay and stick with Carmel education.
Thank you. Can you tell us what motivates you to want to become a board member? Tell us your why.
Absolutely. There are a lot of things that you can do as a board member. The first thing is, because I've been in the board for many organizations, not just the Carmel Schools. It gives a different perspective when you are from a different portfolio, like a different mindset, right? I've been with multicultural and multilingual organizations, and Carmel Education Foundation also has given a different opinion about what we do for the community rather than what we get from the schools and community. So everybody asks the same question, what the school is giving me, but what is that you giving to the school is more important. So I felt like, I mean, it's been a while, and then I had a successful grad from Carmel Schools, and I felt it is a time to give back. And I think there's a time that I decided to be a volunteer for the schools.
Thank you. Tell us about a time when you had to work with a team or team members to make a tough decision, and maybe speak to your process for making the difficult decision, please.
Thank you. I'm an IT professional. I still work as an IT professional, and we don't deal with only the local communities. So I work with teams that are global, so they are working 24 by 7. So for me, getting a win-to-win situation is more important than just winning my point of view across the audience. So it is necessary and mandatory that all your messages are sent across at the same level, right? I mean, there are different languages, and there are different peoples of different skillset, and it is necessary to convey your message to the lowest level and then up.
Well, thank you Venkata again for being here. What attributes do you believe are essential to be a successful, successful board member?
I think we need to work together. It doesn't matter if they have three groups or four groups. I personally feel that Carmel community, this is a privileged community, right? So we have parents who don't send their kids to the school, and the parents who send the kids to the school, right? And there are different groups, and they have different opinions, because once the kid is out of school and then the empty nest, they think in a different way. When the kids are, when the new couple moves into the Carmel community, their perspective is different. And the kids who are sending the kids to the school, I mean, the parents who are sending the kids to the school, they have, they see the schools in a different perspective. So it is necessary that we streamline and then convey the message, like what we are meant for and what we are doing it here. If not, then I think they are processing information in a different perspective. And that is, you know, I was there in a couple of meetings, and then they all ask about their personal, the family, and then their personal kids, how they are performing at school, rather than, the whole class has about 40 students, and they were all given the same level of education, or maybe even more. Some get more and some get less based on their skillset. But the families are asking, why my kid is not writing and cursing writing, why my kid is not doing stuff like that? So, you know, I did all my math using log tables, nobody uses them now. So calculators have taken a lot of, you know, time out of the individuals. So, I mean, you need to change with the time. You know, you cannot live in the past and then demand what you have done, you cannot be asking that now.
Thank you. So our next question is, can you give us one to two examples of when you've had to work with others who have different priorities, different backgrounds, values, or opinions than yourself? And how, what was your strategy on coming, you know, getting to an outcome?
Correct. Being an IT professional, we usually make a model before we jump into building the process. I think Katie might be knowing much better about the IT stuff. So before we do anything, we do, we build a prototype and seek opinions and perspective from each and every team and also every member. It includes the lowest level, like, you know, beginners all the way to the seniors. So the perspectives of each of those individuals are different. So every time, we need to get two pairs of eyes going through the process, just instead of just going through, you know, whatever comes in your mind is not the truth. I believe in that.
Can you tell us a little bit about what you know and like about Cromwell Clay Schools and what you could improve?
Well, that's a difficult question. I guess we, everybody says, I mean, when something is happening, we all fire up and get into the social media saying that, all kinds of stuff. So without knowing the facts and numbers, it is not a good practice to jump into the conclusions and then define what's happening. And, you know, there is, there used to be a story. Somebody sees the tale, somebody sees something else, and then they make up the story, and then you don't know what is happening around there. So I think we have a powerful tone, which is the social media, and I think it is necessary to make better use of it on both sides, not only just from the Carmel Schools, also from the, you know, the community too.
So if chosen for the board, how will you keep confidentiality of information a priority?
Can you come again?
If chosen for the board?
Yeah.
How will you make confidentiality a priority?
That is a very important question. I deal with a lot of clients that includes the state, private, and public sector, and also the federal clients. So security is a prime thing for us. You cannot share the passwords, you cannot share the personal information, you cannot share even with your own family members, because we are dealing with PII, personal information. So it is very necessary that you cannot share anything outside the box. Whatever happens inside the laptop stays in the laptop. Thank you.
School board service requires time. How much time and energy can you dedicate to this position?
So this was the same question asked in a different perspective. I have four kids, so that my oldest one was like, she is in 21 years old, and then my youngest one is 13 years old. So we have split our work, including between me and my wife, and also my daughter also travels from home to the school. It all depends on work-life balance. You know, I work most of the time work from home, because I'm an architect, I don't build everything, every system end-to-end. I just build the prototype and then give a demo to the system and then move on. So I don't build the entire system end-to-end, because I don't have time to, I'm a very expensive professional, to be frank. I'm telling the truth, I don't want to hide that one.
And last but not least, are you part of any organization that may pose as a conflict of interest with you being on the board?
I don't know what kind of agencies are involved with the Carmel Clay Schools as of now, so I don't have any conflict of interest, because I work my own terms and then times too.
Great, thank you. Board, are there any additional questions that you have? Venkata, do you have any questions or anything else you'd like to share with us?
I think I was talking to Mr. B., best for outside, so I think he gave me a brief, like what is the process until tomorrow?
Yes.
I wish you good luck for all of you guys choosing the right candidate.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to every candidate though. I'm not taking your laptop, it's still here.
Thank you. We have no additional business for this evening. May I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Kershter.
Second.
Thank you Louise. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting adjourned 4:0. Thank you.